We're a couple of minutes early, but I think we can, we're gonna start with an executive session anyway, so.
Do you want to sleep?
For one minute, yeah. But let me, let me call the order and we'll do the pledge.
Okay.
And, uh...
I'll stand by the door.
So call the order at 6:58 and, uh, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, uh, I'll take a motion. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel under 1 VSA 313 A3 with our accountant.
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second it.
Which my, yeah. What's your motion?
To, to come out of executive session and I'll make a...
Seconded by Glenn. All in favor at 7:12.
Yeah. Aye.
Motion carried.
Yep.
In light of the fact that Jenny has expressed her intent to retire, the board had, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, provide the town manager, uh, with appropriate actions to take to finish, to allow her to retire.
Right. I'll second that.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Glenn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, appointment with the town clerk. And we're a little early, but can you fit us in?
I, uh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's, let's start with, what would you like?
I'd like to give pay for my vacation plan.
And... How much? Do we have an idea?
Well, I mean, for a 30-year employee, it was four months.
Do you have any?
Is that right? I don't know where, okay, so I, where are we getting that number?
Well, that's what I've been getting from...
So I think Joe's just saying that in the union contract, the buyout portion is three weeks.
Oh, okay.
It's 120.
I'm confused with that then. I'll check it.
I wasn't being confrontational, I just didn't know where we're getting that number.
If we're following the union, the union contract, for the number of years is four weeks, but where it talks about going into retirement or, or leaving, it talks about, what, what is it?
120 hours.
120 hours is the maximum.
160.
Or 1...
No, no, 160 is four weeks. 120.
120.
Okay.
Is a...
40 times.
You're thinking of your, uh...
160 is the total, sorry.
Okay. That, I, I was not aware of that, so...
And, and, and that was page 16 of the, we just looked to make sure we're doing it.
You have it on, yeah.
Making sure we're doing it correctly.
Yep. Should an employee terminate employment, the employee will be paid for his or her daily rate of each on- use vacation day accrued at the time of his or her blah, 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 um, up to 120 hours.
Okay.
Yep. And?
No, but...
So the accrued is the other thing in there, so... Joe, maybe you'd better explain this one.
Um, yeah, give me that back, because this is where my numbers are. Um, so in the, the old memorandum of under, memorandum of understanding, there was no discussion of vacation days. And it doesn't, it doesn't talk about, it does give benefits in terms of, um, life insurance, short-term disability, um, and I think healthcare, but it doesn't talk about, about buyouts for, for, or even offered vacation time. Um, but if we were going by the union contract, um, it looks like it's, to be technical, 1.67 days per month, which is what, 160 hours a year?
Mm-hmm.
So... So that's, I mean, that's how it's...
So what's the accrued, accrued amount?
It depends on when we start, start calculations. Um, we were eight months, how many months are we into the, the year now?
As of March 1, it'll be eight months, right?
It'll be eight months.
So it'll be 107, I think, hours.
And while he's doing the calculation there, it's, because I'm, I'm lucky enough to have two of the people who's, well, part of the signing of the memorandum sitting here. The intent was, even though it may not have said in the memorandum of understanding, the intent was that you got the same benefits as the contract folks did, that you were treated with.
Yeah, so I got 14 rounding to 14 days or 108 hours for the eight months of...
So two weeks? And...
Well, that's got two weeks.
Better than sticking the act.
14 days?
Well, that's two calendar weeks.
Two cal, sorry.
But five days is a week, is a work week.
That's right. So it'll be two and a half. Almost...
So, now, I guess the question is, did you take any vacation in the, in the last eight months?
No. No, I haven't.
Then, then it's...
Any other questions?
Then, no, because then, then it's back to following the contract you could, so what it sounds like using, for the contract language, it's, it's a, the payout, vacation payout, is what again?
So 14 days or 108 hours.
Or 108 hours?
It depends on how it rounds, but yeah.
So that's, that's, that's what it sounds like, so...
Say that again.
I got 108 hours if we do it strictly that.
Yep.
Sorry. Divided by eight, eight-hour day, is how many days? I think 14, right?
Double check that, to make sure we have it right. That's, that's...
13 and a half.
13.5 days. Um... Yeah, so, I'm just double checking, that's acceptable.
That's, I mean, are you looking for a motion?
And that the math adds up to everybody.
Are you looking for a motion to, to do that, or do we just, because what you're doing is just following the agreed-upon?
I think the sticky part for Joe is that it's not exactly in the MOU.
Right, yeah, well, the only reason I got the...
So we're just dotting our i's a little bit here.
Question is because it, it wasn't spelled out in the memorandum of understanding.
I would appreciate a motion.
Good, a motion, so I'll make the motion that we follow what our commitment was, and that comes out to paying out vacation of the accrued time, which is 100...
Eight hours.
Eight hours.
108 hours of time?
Is that okay?
I'll, I agree.
Any other, just got, and that assumes?
Go ahead.
Nope, I'm, um...
Why did the town, uh, pay over 30 days for your, the, the assistant clerk? In that eight hour...
Because I've been having her work to get used to the job, so I can give her some time in it, yes.
It was like double covered. Any other?
Still needs a second, though, right?
Second.
Yeah, I can't do that. I got a motion from Glenn, second from Rod, uh, pay out vacation of 108 hours. I don't know when that comes at retirement or just any time in the next payroll, but it will happen sometime.
Last page, okay.
As per the union contract. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your time. Um, where am I here?
Amendments.
Amendments to the agenda.
None for me.
Are you looking it up?
Yeah, I think maybe.
I thought we were public comments.
You are, okay. Uh, no amendments, approval of the 20, January 25th minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th as written.
Motion by Glenn.
Second.
Seconded by Rod. Uh, any other discussion, changes? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, five minutes for public comment. That's your guy.
Do we need to get five minutes?
No.
That was very definitive.
And that's five minutes apiece, right?
You, you're, you'll get as long as you need. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, we appreciate it. I think. Yeah, I think we, uh, have some issues of concern, but...
Historical society first. We are the historical society.
Historical society, okay.
My name is Walter Spur. I'm one of the board of directors of Fairhaven Historical Society. And, uh, we have some issues of concern, um, about your property, our property, town's property. In 1801, Matthew Lyon gave the town green to the Fairhaven and, uh, and he took off for Kentucky. He left it in your care in perpetuity. Uh, we are concerned because, and while we want to be good soldiers and help in every way we can, we do. At the same time, uh, we are concerned about the fact that no money was put aside in the budget to maintain the fence surrounding the park. And that is an issue for us. As I'm sure you all recall, in 2016, the society helped out a great deal. We were able to raise, I believe, more than...
$55,000.
60, yeah.
$55,000 dollars to support it. And it was a replication, actually, an upgrade, if you will, of the original fence. Uh, that, that was a step forward, we think, for the town, and there's a reason for that. That part out there, Village Green, if you will, is one of 148 in the state. There is a name that's called Fairhaven Village Green is on that list of 148, that's all it is, is a list. But there's a number of different things that are, that all of them have in common. Trees, grass, gazebos. All of that is true. But the other thing that they all have in common is that they are all moneymakers. The events that are held out there make money for the town. And we don't understand why, if this is the moneymaker for the town, and the town is dependent, to a degree, on tourism, which is what all of them are, you know, dependent on, why the money wasn't set aside for maintenance? That's one question. At our meeting last night, what we, uh, had was a, a motion to take full responsibility, to step in and say that we're going to find the money, we're going to make sure it's done in a proper historic preservation manner. Let me follow the rules of historic preservation to make it right and to do it right. After some discussion and a little bit of debate, uh, the motion was withdrawn. So what we have is a situation now where we have a bunch of questions we would like to have answers to. One of them, and perhaps the most important one, is, is this a precedent that we're setting? Are we going to repeat this again in a year, two years, five years, whatever? Where we have to step in because of whatever reason it was for not having the money in the budget, we'll have to do this again? That's the kind of questions that we're trying to deal with, so if you could explain that to us or give us some answers, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
So we discussed it quite a bit, and, uh, it just, on the board's priority list, it didn't make the cut. Now, that's not saying, that's not saying that it won't get done. I think we're working to find the way to get it done in this year's budget, and I think that's the intent of most of the people here.
Yeah, and I, I feel, if you're looking for an answer from me tonight, I'm just hearing what your concern is and everything, and I don't want to shoot from the hip and give you an answer that doesn't, it isn't a well-bought-out. I think there's a, there's a, there's a discussion and, because my, my understanding was, I thought that, like, we have money, it's not like we totally ignore that green. We all understand what the green is. We have money set aside, a tree fund money to replace trees that are gone. We've put picnic tables in. Yes, there's, there's probably, you know, being the newbie, I like to say, okay, maybe we didn't think of fence maintenance when, and, and one of those things. I, I don't want to, without talking through where and how the, where we, we get those monies, but I hear what you're saying is there's some additional maintenance and we, maybe we missed something is what I'm, yeah, yeah.
I think you have to also consider, a lot of those railings are dangerous. We ran into that before, and people, they, the kids get on them, adults sit on them, and they break, and then you're liable for that.
Do you think they need to be replaced at this point?
We know there are, so I've gone around and checked them.
So it's not just a painting at this point?
No, some are gonna have to be replaced.
Okay.
Some will need to be replaced. There's, there's no question about that, and, and it's right. It is, uh, it is dangerous. And if somebody gets hurt, you know what's going to happen, and it won't be pleasant. That's, that's normal, and I'm sure that nobody wants anything like that to happen. But beyond that is the job of more than 130 posts, not posts, but rails that have to be taken care of. They need to be sprayed and primed and painted or oiled, whatever. That has to happen. And it has to happen, hopefully, in the spring so that some of the events won't look as bad as they might if the condition remains the same. So there is a time element involved here as well.
And another thing, and they're gonna, yeah, the revitalization study that they did, go back and look at it. They said our park was the greatest asset that we have, and it, it's the first thing people see when they come into town.
But we, we appreciate the, your desire to not jump in and respond with a knee-jerk. It's not what we're asking for, but we would like some answers to those questions because they are important, not, you know, we, again, we just, we want to do the right thing and be as helpful as we can be, but at the same time, we should set up some kind of a situation where we're not in this, up to our necks, and suddenly, well, where's the money? You know, for the light preservation.
If I could just add too, apparently there was, um, a discussion and a commitment made with a well-known painter in town. And he's very, very popular and in demand, and he had reserved time until he found out that the money wasn't there. And now he is not saving that time for us, which is a big concern to us, big concern. Because if we don't get this guy this year, hopefully, we can get on a list for next year, but if you look at even the, um, Facebook posting of the, the fence that we have put on there, that Scott Bonsi put on, some of the pictures are just amazing. I mean, the fence is in bad shape. It really cannot wait. And we're very concerned that we may have jeopardized and lost this painter at the same time, so just to be aware of that situation. The other thing that came up, we don't know anything about it, but of course, everybody's interested in the ARPA money. So if that's something that could play into that, we would be more than willing to meet with you at that meeting in March and, and talk about that, too.
I think that is one of the things on the list.
Right.
We want to be as helpful as we can.
And there's, right, and there's, there's more, so many things to look at that I, there's not only ARPA money, I, I'm, I think, I think you, you think of not necessarily always taking and having the taxpayers pay for that maintenance. There may be, like, with all the events that are going on, and we do rentals for the booths.
Right.
Maybe, maybe, maybe monies, see, I'm trying to look at how you get an income flow that goes and sits and builds and is there, so you just go and do the maintenance, and it's the, it's the, the events and things that are going on that actually help keep something. I think there's multiple revenue streams, and most, multiple streams you can get, we just, no one's really, myself included, thought how to put those together, but I bet we could put them together and come up with something that would help. I, I just don't know what that, I can't tell you what that is.
We do have some contacts with the Preservation Trust and the Division of Preservation up in Mount Cedar, so we will apply for some grants. We've already done one, but it was rejected, but we, there are more available, so we're going to do that as well, to see whether or not we can get some help for us.
I know, I know Joe is looking to see if he can find any funds to help out, too.
And, and what I hear you saying is sooner rather than later. There's, there's a need that happens to happen very soon.
Which we knew, right?
And in order to get the painter.
That's, that's gonna be the tricky part.
You, you maybe, maybe just, if you can't, worst scenario, if you can't do it this year, I think you still have to look at repairing those railings and doing a temporary thing. Because they will, they'll just put right now.
They do. So, just while we're talking about this and while we're here, one of the concerns was taking, uh, having, uh, there was a school group, I think, that was gonna come in and paint. We were very concerned about the, I think you were as well. Them painting the posts, which no one wants. Is it possible to take the rails off and paint them, you know, in an easier place, like with a paint sprayer? Could we make it go faster that way?
I don't know, but I think the painter that we had hoped to get knows how to do all that and, and could he? I mean, the rails are gonna have to come off if they have to be replaced.
Yes.
Which is speaking of the post, I'm sorry, I'm gonna deviate.
Go ahead.
Who's in charge of letting the Benson Bishop Derby tie it to the marble post? When you've got a thing there to put the banner on?
Joe.
Yeah, that, that was me.
That's Joe.
They said they were gonna put it between the posts, and then I came by this morning and it was hanging, so...
They're not supposed to do that.
Right. That one's on Joe. I will throw him right under the bus on that one.
I'll be here every day, future.
Okay.
I guess, I, the only thing that, um, I might have an issue with in terms of what you talked about income stream from the park, is the beauty of the park is that the library can have their storybook and their free. Certainly, I'm involved with the concert committee, so, um, and we take $7,500 from the town for that, that, um, that event. And we've had spring fling and car shows and things like that. And most of the money made for all those things goes to, um, the school or the library or the Chamber of Commerce or...
Library.
Or the library. And of course, we don't get any money from the storybook, the principal pre-library takes that. So as long, so to ask them for donation, I think you'd probably give a lot, a lot more money than if you said, "It's gonna cost you $25 to rent the park." Because if people, when, when you ask for donation...
Yeah, I don't think I heard that.
No, that, I wasn't talking that. I, I was thinking the Chamber of Commerce is the one that gets the income from when the different booths come in and everything.
Right.
And I'm saying, if the Chamber of Commerce is not doing anything for us, I'd rather put that money into, for example, a maintenance fund.
Just as long as...
There's, there's things you, that we can talk. I think there's innovative ways that we can do what we didn't, I know myself, Sidney, didn't foresee what, what, what maintenance costs, what that maintenance cost would be, or even put a mechanism in place to do it. Okay, we have, let's, let's, I, it looks like we thought ahead on the trees and, and, and we did some other things. We just, now we, I, I think we gotta include the fence in that whole maintenance, because of...
The other thing is, we do have funds for the marble posts. If they get damaged, two hundred damage, unfortunately, ten or one, but they were paid for by the people that did the damage. But should a marble post get damaged, we have money to replace it, and it's about $800, whether it's repaired or replaced.
And I think that, uh...
So we can take care of that.
Yeah, and I think the park's important enough to the, everyone in, hopefully, in the town of Fairhaven, that, that we can have a reserve fund, like we, oh, well, obviously, I knew a lot about school budget, but, you know, we have the roof reserve fund and the car reba, reba, um, fund. So, I mean, and it wouldn't have to be that much money. If you figure it's gonna cost $10,000 every five years, you put in $1,000 every year to the reserve fund and, or $2,000, then you've got it covered.
Well, and, and I'm not looking even, we could make a new one. I know we have a recreation reserve fund and I'm, and I'm just, again, I think we need to take and have some discussion of where are the best, what's, what's, what's the, the one, and it may be a combination of the things for the, for a solution, but I'm pretty sure we can get there.
We're not necessarily gonna solve it tonight, but I, I do think, and I, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn because I'm not necessarily gonna be here for the next meeting, but, um... But I, I think, um, I think everybody wants to find the money to get this done, and I think they, they may be able to find some, you know, spots in the budget that, where there's some savings and, you know, maybe the winter's easy and there's something in Public Works or... It hasn't been, but, you know, maybe, there just may be some room there. That's what we're hoping. That's what I'm hoping. But I don't want to commit to, that's why I'm, I'm being careful what I commit the next board to.
Well, but thank you for your service, and Rod as well.
Both of them.
We've, we've appreciated working with you both.
We had a lot of fun picking them up.
And I do, I probably should take a little bit of this for not having put that fund together five years ago. I mean, you're right.
We're, we're remiss on that, too.
Yep.
You know, we could have also said, gee, we need to look at this.
Yep.
You'd think paint would last a long time.
We'll, we'll split it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in and talking to us.
Thank you for your time, guys. Absolutely. Sorry if I missed it.
No problem. Uh, I do believe a lot of them railings are pressure-treated, four by quarters.
They are.
Yeah, they are.
Pressure-treated lumber dries and cracks and, uh, gets into sunlight and everything, and, uh, you're really not supposed to paint it.
Well, they aren't. They were stained.
But even that, they're supposed to be air-dried before...
Before you...
With the year. So there's gonna be a lot of cracking that goes on with them, but they may not necessarily fail if somebody climbs on them.
No, that's true.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, we, we should be having signs up that says, "Don't climb on it."
There should be some real close inspection.
And they don't read.
But it protects us to some degree.
I think you're, I think you're right, that the, the rails probably are not as, as bad a shape in five years as what... How many have we been, five years?
A spray and a paint guy probably would be very good.
I think some are broken, though.
Very well could be.
Well, especially where they were under those bushes, and they got all that green rung and stuff on it, which is, yeah, that, that... Right, right, they, they rotted, since done the fishing, covered it.
But we, we have not forgotten, and we will...
No.
Well, we're always happy to remind you.
Well, keep going. Thank you for your time. Five minutes for public comment. You got far enough, Rich?
I think the town spends a lot of money on that park already. It may not be budgeted for it, but I see them mowing it all the time. I see them picking up leaves all the time. Tree maintenance, trees taken down, replanting. I think there's quite a lot of money spent there already. And I, and I agree with having some fence money there, definitely.
We shouldn't.
It's definitely a, it's definitely gotta be there.
We should maintain what we have.
If it's there, you gotta take care of it.
Agree.
Five minutes for public comment, but I think you're here for something else anyway. Department head reports.
Close that door for me, please.
At least a little bit. Yeah, just a little. We can, uh, once you get through your manager stuff, maybe we'll bump trash up, just so people don't have to wait. But go ahead.
So I get to be police, DPW, and manager today?
All good, done.
Done. Everything's perfect. Seventy degrees, sunshine. Arrested the police department, they got two DUIs, they picked up a wanted person, and driving, now suspended license over the last two weeks. Nobody mentioned it, but there was, um, somebody that came up and clipped a, a post and a bush over in front of the library. The police did pick that individual up, and there is, uh, there is a rest warrant pending. In front of Jeff, Sergeant Kerber received a 2021 certificate of appreciation from Vermont Chapter of MAD for his outstanding DUI enforcement. Mr. Kerber is a passion, the chief says, for making roadway safer, and always goes above and beyond to reduce crashes, impaired driving, and aggressive driving in our community. So we thank Mr. Kerber for keeping us that much safer. Mr. Breezy, who's a park timer, he began his fourth year here with the Fairhaven PD. We appreciate his time with the organization. Traffic enforcement, we handed out five parking tickets, sixty-one traffic tickets, and thirteen written warnings. So they're out there banging away on those that are speeding through town. The chief did receive the $30,000 from the Homeland Security grant that paid for his radios and that fingerprint machine that we, we got a few months ago. And he would like both myself and the board to know that the carpet in the police department is in terrible shape and needs replacement. It was installed in 2002, so the stuff's twenty years old and it's pretty beat up and falling apart. That's what I got for the police.
Wasn't there a little more on that grant? What, what did we not do?
He says it wasn't fully implemented, I think there was just cash that just wasn't spent out. They got, they got the cash, but they didn't, they didn't need it because they got the fingerprint and, and the radios. For less than what the amount was.
But nothing we didn't do that we need to, nothing, okay.
No. For highway, still a lot of small, smaller snow and freeze thaws. They get our guys up and out of bed and get the salt down the roads, which is always expensive. But to date, they've had twenty, twenty-one storms, twenty-one snow events, with a total of forty-six inches of snow. And, uh, tonnage is six hundred and fifty-three tons of salt. You did see him out there, out there cold patching. There is a, a soft spot on South Main, just over the railroad tracks from here. On the south side of the railroad track. They're gonna get to cold patching that, if anybody's interested to know. But they wanna make sure that there's not a, a water line leaking underneath. They don't wanna put cold patch down and then dig it back up, just to put it back down again. So, they're getting at it, they just had to wait for the guy to come up and listen to that water line. DPW's also gonna be removing, removing the playground equipment, this is, they put up kind of a security fence around the perimeter where that stuff is, where the existing playground is now. They'll tear that out in preparation for the new playground equipment to go in in March. And as I reported at last meeting, that playground equipment is still scheduled for March, we're still on, we're still on target for that. A few more waters, water meters that froze over the last, last couple of weeks in that, those real bad negative degree days. If, uh, if your basement's not heated, or if it's underneath a uninsulated trailer, those things will freeze. And they had trouble with an analyzer, chlorine analyzer at the water plant, they did get that up and running, though they may have to make a large purchase. They're, they're trying to sidestep that to, and, and keep the existing equipment going. We'll see, there's more to come on that. Waste water plant upgrades moving forward. This warrant sees a $3.9 million payout, I think it's $3.9 million payout. That's all wastewater, almost all wastewater. It's, I've been waiting for this opportunity, Joe. I wrote that check. Uh, next couple of weeks, the wastewater will continue, will continue the construction. A few more pieces of equipment they've been waiting for is coming on site. And they, they continue to do the training for startup, so that project is moving along very well. Now, for the town manager, we get, we did get quotes. It must've been this morning that I saw those quotes, for paving. Uh, paving prices did go, go up pretty high. What our quotes were for everything we had planned this year, the quote was more than our budget, so we, we sent them back to try to scale that back and see what we can do within our budget. We talked about the playground. We're doing some trainings with Jenny on Nemrick, Eileen and I will be doing that on March tenth. The mayor race is picking up, we have nine candidates now. That's exciting, we have a baby goat and a Rottweiler puppy, which is just adorable. WCAX has picked that story up, so you'll see them poking around. Candidates, we're having a Candidates Day event, which, Mr. Greeno, I wanted to talk to you about. Saturday eleventh, uh, Saturday, this coming Saturday at eleven AM at the gazebo in the park. We're inviting all of the mayoral candidates to come down. Sky the Horse said, you know, should definitely be here. And we're asking the, uh, those running for selection to also join us. Just be a good chance to meet and greet and kinda have a good time and take the edge off. So that should be fun. Uh, we're meeting with, myself and a few others are meeting with Senator Leahy's office to talk about our congressional appropriation. I'm not really willing to let this warehousing and rail spur project go. Department of Ag, Vermont Department of Ag, Department of Transportation, myself and Rutland, Rutland Regional are on this call to try to get Leahy to give us some money to do this, so. I guess it's gonna, gonna The Department of Ag sees this as a real, uh, kind of game changer for our ag industry. So, we really lack cold storage and transportation, and that rail spur gets our products, our Vermont products, out of town, out to urban areas. So, um, it doesn't hurt to keep asking.
You were also gonna allow repackaging facilities, right, for smaller operators?
Exactly. It, it gives our small operators an opportunity to reach those larger markets. It's, in Vermont, it's, that's what we have, we don't have these big, these large farms, so. Uh, Transportation Committee update, so I started going to the Transportation Committee meetings. I went to the last one Thursday night at five. As a heads up to everybody in Fairhaven and those in the area, the state does intend to drop $4.2 million on 22A from Fairhaven out to Orwell. They're gonna, what they called, smooth out the, what did he call those? Where the water pools in the, in the ruts, he, he used some term for it.
Well, they have to have more than Orwell, I'll tell you that.
So are they, are they widening or just shimming?
This is just to fix what they're calling the, the, uh,
Crown of the road.
The, the dangerous portion of the road. In three years, they're coming back, and they're gonna do, they're working on the right-of-way portions right now, and they're gonna widen that road.
Because based on our paving budget, $4.2 million to go from Fairhaven to Orwell is nothing.
That's not much, it's a drop.
There's gotta be, there's a T and L course.
Right, they're not gonna do anything.
Almost what they did already.
It's basically what they did already. Fill in the wheel thing.
Only, only
Anyway.
The T and L course, they put it, they, they fill the sags, and then they go over like a armor boat. And it's good for two or three years.
It'll be better.
And, and that's where they're going with this, they wanna fix the safety problem out there right now, and they're coming back later to, to widen and do the big, the big construction.
The safety problem is no shoulder in an eight-foot ditch, I mean, that, that's the safety problem.
I heard it wasn't in Fairhaven at all, it was like West Haven, Long Hill.
It, it won't be until Long Hill.
Have you noticed that right in the middle of Long Hill, you get that lump in the culvert down there raised up, and it never went back down? And that causes more accidents on that hill than you can take out.
But they paved over that two or three times since it's popped in.
I don't do that, you gotta grind it off and get rid of the hump.
Banana, keep going, Joe.
Keep going. Uh, so I've been working with the National Guard these last couple of weeks, they wanted, and I'm not sure what this ceremony is called, but when they transfer authority from one commander to another of a post. They wanna have one here in Fairhaven, so, uh, we've been working with them to, to make this, to make, make their ceremony successful. So it sounds like it's gonna be on the green or at the airport, depending on what kind of equipment they wanna bring in, because they wanna have, you know, military equipment and, you know, have a show of it.
Cool.
Yeah, that's cool, they're, they're really great to work with.
Someone don't run over the fence.
So I don't think a Humvee's gonna fit, guys.
It does, it'll fit, we put, never mind.
Uh, and projects, uh, lighting in the park and that, that's still sitting waiting for the feds, salt, oh, salt should we're talking about later. Town hall project is, is moving forward, they started, uh, they moved the electrical, they're doing paving on Thursday downstairs, the base for the elevator, and they've got, they've exposed the brick in the site where the elevator will go, so that's moving forward. Pump station project, that generator is in, they're scheduling the install. Playground replacement, that's moving forward, demo starts this week, installation we talked about. Sidewalks downtown, we're still waiting on the state for that. And dog park grand opening in May. Things have finally picked up and it started going that direction, after two years.
Nice.
Yeah, I'm excited, I'll be glad to finish some of these.
That's all you got?
That's, that's all I got.
Can we, is it all right if we move new business A and then come back to old business? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Just 'cause you're here. I'm assuming that's your part.
I'm just here to have any questions.
Joe?
So, just to set it up, waste hauling bids did come back last week, we had two bids. Uh, one from the Hubbard Brothers and the other one from Casella, who is our current hauler. On the table in front of you, there's a small narrative going through the, uh, through what I found in the bids, as well as a comparison, spreadsheet with comparison of what our current costs are, um, and then the two proponents.
Reckon.
Right, is there recommend, is there any, anyone, what, any other comments about, is there one that you?
So, just, just as a summary, just off the top, uh, we, we have had a good relationship with Casella, um, and the staff down at the transfer station, um, feel they did a great job, would like to stick with them. Uh, in terms of the proposals, uh, the Hubbard Brothers proposal was, did lack, uh, it just lacked information that made it difficult for me to, it made it difficult for me to, um, compare competitiveness. And while the gentleman is here, it wouldn't be a hundred percent fair to start asking questions if this gentleman was competitive and not give the other gentleman the opportunity.
That said, do you need that time before?
Yeah, if I, yes, if I can get, if I can get a response for disposal on four options, then that would make it a bit more clear.
So should we table for two weeks?
If the board would like.
And are the bids good for two weeks on both sides?
Mine's good.
Yes, I would have to ask, but I, I would assume so.
I, I wouldn't.
Well, they, what, when, when is the bid, or when is the con, the current contract out?
Uh, July.
Okay, so, I mean, it's, it's gotta be good till July.
Yeah, we, we got time.
Both have to be good till July.
Potentially. Uh, yeah, if you need more time, I don't see any reason why we have to rush it.
Yeah, see why we have to rush it.
Yeah, uh, it's up to the board, I, we can go as it is or we can, we can not, it's
You can make a recommendation to us if you wanna go ahead. But it, it felt like you could just reach out and get a little more information and you'd be apples to apples.
Because we only have, what you're saying is we only had two bid, and of the two bids, only one with the complete information that we asked for, so it's,
That's where I'm at.
I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant on
Both columns have, did not respond.
Yes.
Right.
That's right.
Uh, for some, for revenues, yes.
Some motor oil.
The, the trouble, the trouble is, um,
I'm cautioning you all not to mention numbers.
The trouble is the disposal, that we can't, we can't base budget numbers on, if we don't, if we don't know what disposal's gonna be.
The only point I was trying to make is, uh, when we're looking to get the best waste hauling deal we have, I think that having two bids in front of me, I feel more comfortable making the decision than having one.
Sure.
I, if you tell me that only one applied, then that's the only time I'd wanna consider one, but it sounds like we,
Let's, I agree. Let's give you a few minutes, just, you know, a few days, two weeks to
I'll reach out and get some information.
That, that, that we're looking for.
Yep. If that's okay, I need a motion anyway, probably.
Are you looking for a motion to table this for, and
I mean, you can make any motion you want, but that's what I would ask for.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to table the waste hauling bids for, uh, two weeks to get additional information.
Do you think that's long enough?
Yes, that should be worth it, I think.
Second.
That's our next meeting anyway, right? Not mine, but
Well, I mean, do you wanna put it on the board, the new board? For their first organization meeting?
To
It'll be fine.
I think they'll be okay.
Glenn will settle straight.
Don't blame him, don't blame him.
Glenn said do it now.
It's mainly that I just want good information to make this decision. And he'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Do you need
Can I just throw one thing out there?
You can.
I don't do your trash now.
Right.
And I did just a site visit. And what I'm seeing in the bed is that a lot of these materials are in the same container. So, on each line, on the second page, that, you know, there's three or four different commodities going into the same container, and I wrote the amount down for each one as they're individually, but they're not down through the line. And I just wanted to point out on my notes, so y'all know, I did make a mistake on my notes on section two, the 180 should've been 160 like the rest of them. Just so you guys know that, that I just thought at reading it myself, actually, it should, the trucking should be all the same.
Let's, um, let's have Joe reach out.
Yeah.
I think it, based on what I'm reading here, for, it's worth taking the extra two weeks and looking at it.
I'll do that, sure, appreciate your time.
And, sorry for
And will I get a notification, or is it two weeks Monday, or?
It'll be, uh, I think Joe will reach out.
Okay, I'll get Joe. Do I have your business card, I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you for
I think, yeah, Joe should reach out, thank you very much. I just, there's enough, uh, upside to talking to everybody that I think we should
And it's, uh, I was on the fence of calling or not, but it wouldn't be fair to one company to call them and not call somebody else, so. That's kinda where that landed.
Um, I don't think it's wrong to clarify in a bid if you have questions, rather than just rejecting. I, that's why I didn't wanna share any numbers tonight, because that would.
Taint.
Taint the whole shit, yeah, okay. And it goes without saying that those are still, don't share those around. So let's go back to old business, uh, policy review. And our capital improvement policy.
So we, uh, I made the corrections that the board requested, um, there were also a couple, uh, typos in there that I was made aware of. We've made, we took care of those too, uh, so I, I think it might be as you wanted it.
Yep. Any changes or discussions?
I was, I was gonna make a motion to accept the capital, uh, program, uh, budget policy.
Is there a second?
I'm reading.
Even just for discussion?
Second for discussion.
I, I mean, and while Rod Green, I'll just say that, I look at this as a, this is a breathing document. Where we, we, we now have something that would probably, as we go out and do some work with capital, with our capital plan. We might be coming back relooking and tweaking it as we've used it. But I think, I think it's a, it's a good place to start, so that's the reason for my motion.
Joe? Or Rod, and while he's reading?
Uh, no, but just in terms of what we've been talking about with this board over the last year, we've been going through policies. And it's a, it's just a good practice to keep, like Glenn said, it's a, all of our policies should be kind of living where it adapts to current times. So I appreciate the thought in that, because we, we want it to work for our citizens, for the residents.
As long as everyone knows what the definition of a policy is.
I've, I've, I've been told.
Any?
I, nope.
And again, it's, it's a living, breathing document that, it's policy, they can change, boards can change it. It's just a, trying to get a bit of continuity between boards.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Any other discussion? Right now we've got a motion to approve as written. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Uh, where are we, reserve fund policy?
So I also made the, uh, requested edits on that one as well.
Yeah, maybe not all of them, but.
Did I miss one?
I, I made a suggestion.
Oh, I, I'll change it.
The, the maximum funding, we were gonna not say maximum, we were gonna say target.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, I will change that.
That's a pretty minimal change.
Yeah.
Did your, um, you got everything on there that, all the funds are included now?
Yeah, and I was also requested to put the recreation account on this policy as well, which I did, it's on the.
Right, what you don't have on your copy, Rod, is, and looking, there's only one that we had that wasn't, uh, on here, and that was the recreation reserve fund, that's what got me.
There's recreation buildings, but.
Yeah, but I think there's a rec fund.
There was a.
That's not on here?
There's a fund.
It is now.
It is now.
It is now, okay.
There's a, there's a recreation fund that has.
There's also.
That has seventy-two with some earmarked money in it, so that's a pretty good chunk of change.
There's also discussion that this format will be tweaked a little bit to, um, include two more columns. So there's a maximum, minimum, a current amount that's in it, and, um, a lot of.
Earmar- earmarked money.
Earmarked money, so it'll give you a, a nice, and that may not come out every day or whatever, but at least at budget, you'll have a very nice snapshot to see where you're at.
Yep.
So you can, uh, make decisions.
Part, part of this policy that, that talks about every board, right after a new board comes in after the first of March, around April, you get this. And you look at it and say, okay, here's what we have in, here's, here's what we have in there, here's what's earmarked, uh, how, how are we doing, and it helps you in.
Well, a, a lot of these, the, the definition of the fund is obvious.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but if the previous discussion, if we include the, uh, the fence in the recreation fund, which was, it was mentioned. How does the next board know what kind of things are included in, my example, the recreation fund?
So for, for the rep fund, that's kind of a, it's been a kind of a catch-all for programs we have. Um, the accountant does have those funds segregated out, so there's, in her spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So there is like the recreation money, which is however much, and then concerts in the park, that's segregated out, so if you can see that.
I think he's just thinking an addendum that says, any of the ones that aren't completely self-explanatory, what's in them?
Well, if it, if it's.
An explanation.
Yeah, uh, you know, if it's, if it's already broken out by Jenny, then that's fine, then I'm not seeing it here. But in some of the cases, you know, you know, like the highway fund, some, the next board might not realize that they can't touch that money for other things.
But the highway stays in highway.
Highway stays, so to, to make that clarification, you know, since this is a carry for, from board to board, you know, some of that stuff. Cause some new, uh, some board member's gonna be new and they're not aware. Same thing with the water sinking fund and the sewer sinking fund and all that.
Probably go back.
But I think you can, um, keep adding those as you go, I, I mean.
Right, thinking, I just wanted, wanted to, when we were talking about the four columns, uh, the only, only one that one's lacking is the earmarked, but what we have.
And that's.
Actually look pretty good, but I, but you can look at the numbers down through there, saying, you know, we're.
We're, we're in between the minimum and the target.
Yeah.
Which is what I would expect.
We're, we're in pretty much.
But, you know, the reason I brought this up, you know, many years ago, is because we kept on saying, well, let's put thirty thousand there. But we've already got X number of hundreds of thousands, so when do we stop?
Exactly.
And that's.
It's become less of a problem now.
Uh, yeah, I think, well, yeah, we keep spending it now.
Yeah.
Uh, if the, if the board is interested, if you just approve it, I can make the changes and then have you sign it at the, later or at the next meeting.
We can sign at the information.
On Monday, yeah.
If you have it done by now.
I'll have it done later today, those are easy changes.
Okay, is everybody?
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the town funds policy with the edits of changing maximum to target.
Adding two columns.
And adding, uh, two, two columns, one with the, one column.
Two rows, right?
Hmm?
And two rows, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And two.
Glenn's got the two, two additional rows, which you may have already done.
You've got them added.
Yeah, mine are blank.
See, we, I took, yeah. So my, my motion again is to accept the funds policy with the agreed-upon edits.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Um, salt shed.
Oh, this is exciting.
How exciting?
Uh, not as exciting as I want it to be, but it's, it's, as I said in the past, it's a way forward. Uh, we did, uh, get some budget numbers for the pad, blocks and dirt work.
Be careful, are these budget or?
They're not bid numbers, they're budget numbers.
Okay.
And who provided these budget numbers? Is, these are your get, best guess, or is this an engineer or?
No, this is a contractor.
A contractor.
A contractor. No.
But you'll still have to go out to bid.
We would have to bid this out, yeah, but, um, total project now, um, with the TARP system installed and, uh, what we learned today. We would be at about a hundred and ten thousand.
Size?
Uh, the same size that we had before, not, not the eighty by.
Forty by eighty?
Was it forty by eighty, I thought it was small, pass.
It's.
It was a smaller version.
The second version, yeah.
I think it, I think it's forty by eighty, but, uh, does that also include having the layout over the entire area? The gravel, a gravel pad.
That's, that's just, this is just this project. This is just this shed, the other side is not, not in the project. This is just to get the salt shed up, the rest of the pad would have to be redone.
Is the hundred and ten thousand, does that include, or is it, or can we take the fifty thousand dollar grant we've met? So what we're really talking is about sixty thousand dollars, which, what's the?
That would, that number is minus the grant.
Minus, so it's a hundred and ten minus fifty thousand.
No.
Of the grant money, which means it's gonna cost us sixty thousand dollars.
About.
Oh, okay.
So I, and, and, cause that's, I'm just thinking, uh.
But you don't, this is just an update, right, there's nothing that we're gonna do.
There's no solid numbers.
Or do you need us to tell you to go out to bid, what do you need?
Well, uh, I don't know if the board would want to commit to going out to bid and, and spending sixty thousand dollars on the last day, so it's, this is an update, I guess.
I'm comfortable committing you were going to bid on.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's, I don't think you, I don't think you'd want to, so this is an update, but this is the direction, I guess, um.
I think, since we've been talking about this project for three years, I'm pretty comfortable saying that we would go out and get bids. The next board can.
Can decide whether to accept those bids or.
If they're awful.
But, because it's, uh, right now.
But you can let it go two more weeks, it's been years.
I, I, I can bid it or not, I mean, you don't have to accept it.
Right.
But, um, I could draft something up and.
Any thoughts?
No, I, I'm, I'm all for going out to bid because the next board's.
Let's, let's put it this way, draft the RFP, run that by the next board and send it out after their first meeting.
Because, uh.
But let them see it, so they're comfortable, but that gives you some time to draft it. And I don't see why they wouldn't wanna try to get this project done.
A hundred and ten thousand is so much better than a half a million.
Right.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
John had a question for you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Is this just for salt?
The salt, yes, the salt shed.
Salt.
It's not salt and sand.
You can put some sand in though, you could leave the other end open and put sand in the back.
This is forty by eighty, you need that much salt?
This was, this will take the entire year's salt.
Can you afford to fill it all at once?
I guess if you budget that much, yes, depends on which money we get.
Okay.
Six hundred ton.
You can afford to do it, I mean, you have it, so it's like, how you allocate it.
Yeah, so right now what they do is they have, what, two stores worth, and they work through it, and then they get a delivery, and then they work through it and they get a delivery.
It only is a problem on a short, short salt year, when it's difficult to get them in. And you might get a better price trucking in six hundred ton of salt.
Yes, larger loads.
Maybe.
So, is, is the.
Did it say something?
It's only a truckload at a time, right?
Some years, your salt consumption is way down, other years it's way high.
Right.
So it's gonna vary, and the price varies.
Yeah.
Trucking varies, fuel varies, um, all that stuff. But, uh, long-term at, uh, the airport, you're putting a salt barn at the airport.
Mm-hmm.
And you're still gonna have the sand pile down there for a while, maybe. How many loaders do you have?
Uh, the intent, so we have the loader down here and a backhoe.
Backhoe?
Yeah, the backhoe can load on one side and the loader can load down here.
If, if you finish the pad in the scope for this project, you can stack sand up there.
Can we just sand in salt there?
We can if we do the pad as well.
Which won't be any worse than what you're doing now with your sand outside, and they'll be next to each other, it just makes sense to me. And with your wet, with your wetland permit the way it is, you should finish that pad anyway.
We should, that's true.
I'm just gonna wonder that.
If there was a book of secrets, that's what I would write in it, so, there you go.
Why I asked the question?
Is there a book of secrets? No.
Good. Okay, so, we.
I think you're just gonna, you're gonna start working on it and the next board's gonna actually pull the trigger.
Okay.
I'll draft something up and see what we get this time around.
But I would advise in the RFP to finish the pad, so you can get that efficiency with the loading and, I'm with you on that. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, mongoro discussion, I'm gonna, Chris may be here at the end of the meeting. And since I'm abstaining from that discussion, we don't have enough people, so let's pass on that and it may, may or may not get done tonight. Uh, we did trash hauling, um, let's go to the inclusion policy.
Yep, now this, this goes back, uh, to where, oh, it was quite a few, a couple of months ago now. That, uh, we came and we talked about, uh, the town of Fairhaven doing a declaration of inclusion. That they're, they're looking statewide for every municipality to have some form of, uh, declaration of inclusion. I've worked with the economic development committee. We drafted some things, uh, long story short, we've, we've come up with a very, a short, to the point inclusion statement. The thought process is that if, going forward, if someone were to come in here and wanted to chair a, a diversity and inclusion, uh, committee. To work out anything more, uh, that would be the appropriate group to do that. I. Don't know if you want me to read the, what we came up with, but.
You can if you want.
Okay, why don't I just, so what we've, what we came up with for a declaration of inclusion is. The town of Fairhaven condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, or, or expression, age or disability. And wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. And will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Fairhaven has and will continue to be a place where individuals can freely express their opinions. That is the inclusion statement that I'm proposing. For us, so I'd like to make a motion that we, we accept that inclusion statement.
Uh, motion by Glenn, do we have a second?
For discussion.
For discussion, sounds fine. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod for discussion on the, uh, inclusion policy. What is your discussion?
Well, I kinda chuckle at all of the, uh, at any inclusion statement, uh, and inclusion efforts. Um, and not, not one inclusion statement that I've ever read, and I've not read them all. Has ever said that this town or organization or whatever fully embraces the, uh, uh. The Constitution of the United States and all of these rights and inclusions that it includes, or that, that it encompasses. I mean, there is a lot of smart people that made the, uh, Declaration of Independence and all these documents. And I think we're trying to recreate them. The Constitution outlaw, lays out all of these rights and, and inclusive language. That, and I think it should be somehow written into any inclusion statement, whether it's this one or any of them. It just seems that sometimes we're trying to recreate the document that is the basis of our, uh, our rights and our, the, the whole democracy. All of those. I'm not saying that it's bad the way it is, it's just, I think we, any group should include the, uh, the, the. The federal documents which lay all these stuff, stuff out anyway. We may not always follow them, and I, and I understand that this is why this is being written, but. You know, I think it should be, include a statement that says, you know, based upon the Constitution of the United States. And all the rights it includes, this is what we.
I, I welcome, yeah, again, took the task to go with the economic development committee and come up with one.
Yeah.
Uh, we can modify as you see fit. We went and got the, the proper, verbiage from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, also went and, and looked, uh, I, yeah, tell, tell me what you want to, to make it your own and we can edit to make it your own.
Any other?
Have you seen it, Chris? Yeah, I read it. Are you thinking Rod, like, an opening sentence there, or just?
Uh, yeah, kind of an opening sentence. You know, I mean, uh, most of the language can stay, but basically, y- you know, admitting this, any town, any organization should admit that based upon the constitution of the United States, this is, this is how we see it.
I, 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 I just asked, put, put it together, come back, uh, I know you won't be on the board, but come back and we can. I do believe there's a running tally of every municipality and whether they've adopted a declaration of inclusion.
How's that going?
Thirty, uh, there, there, the list comes out and I believe just last week, you got another phone call asking about the status of, uh, to just, uh, it's, uh, it's one that, uh.
People are watching.
Well, and i- it's, yes, but I'm saying, not only is it the right.
Yeah.
I, I'm just looking to get something, it's the right thing for business to make sure that, that economic development wise, that everyone knows we're an open. I think it's a given, we operate on the constitution of the United States of America. There's, they, they wanted us, and everyone, they wanted a step further. I'm looking, not looking to put, uh, we, we have a lot of things that can be done. I've seen different municipalities put a committee with, with select board members and, and huge committees and come up with multi-page documents on what they're gonna do. I look at us in Fairhaven and I'm saying that we, we gotta do what we can do. Um, some municipalities went and just let their select board minutes say that they believe in inclusiveness. Uh, Joe, I mean, they've gone everything from both ends of the spectrum. I just, uh, when we.
Uh, is this a good place to start and, and get it approved? So we have one on the books?
I, I would.
And then edit from there?
What I would be looking for is get it there, get it on the books. And I feel comfortable, we're in a good place going forward. I look at the committee and I welcome a person who wants to chair one to go and build on this.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's all I, I probably.
Joe, Chris, comments? And this is the recommended, uh, EDC recommends adoption.
Worked quite a bit. We, we went from, uh, almost a full page of cut and paste back and forth in meetings and got back to, because we said, you know, uh, not sure. We've also gotta have a document that we, we say absolutely we're living to this document. If, if, if you're looking for Rod to be happy, if we put under the constitution of the United States, I'm not sure under the constitution of the United States, it, it, it probably covered some, but I'm, I, I'm.
We'd want us.
Am I, am I factual? I, I, I.
I don't know.
I don't know. But I mean, if, uh, it's our document, if we wanna add, I, I, I can, retract my motion and make it, accepting the declaration of inclusion with the edits that we agreed upon, which is, uh, what I just read with, with something that's, under the constitution of the U- United States of America. Then we say the town of Fairhaven condemns, if you wanna do that. Yeah, we can, I can amend my motion.
Let me see, Rod, take a look. I don't know. That was just
Yeah.
what Rod was thinking about.
I just think.
I feel like you were shooting for something a little more general.
I was, I was not looking to be very specific at all. I, and I think when you start to.
Referencing.
Are we prepared for every decision we make to go back to the constitution of the United States of America and double check? Cause I'm not. I, I've done enough hours in the day. And I'm not, I'm not doing, but I'm just saying, can't do it. I want something general enough that it's like motherhood and apple pie.
Let's.
How can you not support, that's what you, you had.
So we've got a, yeah, I think we've got a couple of options. We can either.
And we can.
Send it back for rework, or we can go with what we have. I don't know if we wanna shoot from the hip tonight, do we?
And, and I can tell you that the EDC has reworked this to death. I'm not, not
You're ready.
in a position, I'm gonna go back and ask them to rewrite. If you want, you want, you want.
And we appreciate.
I don't mean to be obstinate, but I'm just saying. Not so.
It's okay to be, but.
Uh, not, not.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for discussion purposes. We do have one. So we either need to vote on that or.
I mean, just my opinion, I'm fine with it the way it was. I mean, if we wanna go to consensus and kinda work some of that in, that's fine as well, but I'm, I'm fine either.
We're pushing a lot of stuff in the next.
The point I'm making is that if, to tweak it much more, we should really have a full committee.
And think about it.
Absolutely. And it's not just the constitution, it's, it's been, and it's, it's.
Bill rights and.
There are areas to, to go and I'm just going, I don't know if we, not, I, I don't think, know if we can sign up for that.
Okay.
That's why I'm not asking for sign up for that. That's all.
But let's, uh, any other discussion? We've got a motion in front of us to approve it as it was written the first time. Let's vote on that. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one. Sorry, Rod.
And I think I wrote from the original.
That's okay.
Did I write from the original?
No, that's mine.
Okay.
And then, uh, do you wanna take this one over?
No, you got it. You're doing good.
Okay.
Uh, which one?
I just, the only one I don't wanna do is Mungero. We can do it at the end.
Yeah. Get going on what you're up to.
Uh, so the last one is, uh, public works mutual aid agreement, huh?
You did the two policy?
Yeah.
Uh, so this is the mutual aid agreement that the, the Fairhaven signed up for, that the last.
Well, I didn't see except for D.
Yeah.
We're cranking.
That the board signed up for last year. This, uh, this just kinda formalizes how we help, uh, our, our towns around us and how our towns around us can help us.
Yep. In an emergency situation.
In an emergency situation. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't obligate us to send resources to other towns. And it doesn't obligate other towns to send resources to us, but it makes it easier to send those resources, receive resources. And then if FEMA money, money is involved, uh, makes it easier us for, easier for us to receive payment from the federal government in case of emergencies.
And to just be reimbursed for those services.
For the services, yeah.
Yeah.
So there, no change, they, uh, I sat in on the review two weeks ago, no changes, uh, from last year.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second it.
We need a motion for the chair to sign as well.
That was in his motion.
Yep, it was.
That was in his motion and have the chair sign it for the, for the group.
Uh, you wanna switch?
No, you do this, then I'll switch after.
Okay. So you want me to sign that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and just someone else, we, we went through, when this, this came through the first time, we went through page and line after line after line, so it's been, it's been pretty well vetted. It may seem, it's just for people to understand.
Yep.
So it was a motion, Chris, seconded by Glenn.
Yeah.
Chair to sign, um, any other discussion? Uh, motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Have you got a copy of that to sign?
I do.
And, uh, parking lot, or you can.
Are we gonna go back to Mungero discussion?
Um, you can sit there, Jeff.
Okay.
So Mungero discussion, um, I know this has been an ongoing conversation since two thousands, early two thousands. Um, I think Glenn, a few meetings ago, three or four meetings ago, was really looking to see if we can get some, you know, some decisions on this and. Yeah, I'll set with him.
You're good?
I'm good, yeah. A few meetings ago, Glenn really wants, wanted to get some, you know, try, try to finally make some decisions on Mungero and, you know, you know, there's issues of the gate being locked, not being locked, is it accessible right away issues, um, whole host of kinda concerns about, you know, Mungero. And it went back from, Joe put a kinda little, um, history together on, oh, Glenn did it. Sorry, apologize. Glenn put together, um, listing going back to two thousand, I believe, from what I was reading on it.
To two thousand.
A lot happened in two thousand eight, um. So that's kinda the intro. Joe and, um, Glenn have more detail on it, but, and I know Joe has, as a town manager, I think has some recommendations on. Are you gonna present anything, Joe, on the?
Uh, I wasn't gonna present, no. I was looking for some maps that I had. It might just, um, make life easier if I can take those out.
Yeah, and while he's pulling those up, it's just, the part about Mungero, it's been shown as a road, as a trail in class four.
Yeah.
Uh, we had a, a folder where most of the research, a lot of the research was done out of, out of a discontinuance folder that, uh, at one time there was some decisions made around, uh, discontinuing and it, and it just looked like it never really got finalized. And, and, and it caused, and, and the timeline was there, it caused some, some questions that, that, it raised quite a few questions too. Whole point being that when the, the move was in the early two thousands to discontinue, uh, a, a portion of Mungero, uh, it was, um, it, it looked like that it, it was, a decision was made by a select board here contingent upon some other things that, that, that didn't happen. So then it got spread out over time and then a new select board came in and new, new, new town manager came in. And the whole thing ended up, uh, kinda, kinda getting lost. And I think what Joe's gonna show you is, uh, some maps of, of, uh, what Mungero looked like in the very beginning. And then it went to a spell where it was a class four and then a trail. Then all of a sudden the trail disappeared. Had the appearance of being discontinued. My, my whole reason for researching the thing was to say, uh, it's, our water line goes up through there. A lot of it's our recreation. It's too important not to, let's get, let's get some clarity on it.
So here, uh, where the cursor is, the dotted line, so the, the dotted line, uh, indicates, and this is, so, uh, this is a, uh, V-Trans map. So this is a map, you know, they document all of our trails, ma- uh, roads, class fours, threes, twos, and ones. Uh, this is designated a trail right now back in nineteen eighty, I think this was eighty-two. Um, it looks like they, somebody back in that time maybe thought, hey, let's turn it into a class four. Though as we move further into the future, I'll just shrink this guy up. It was eighty-two in oh-six. Map's got a little better. You can see it just kinda dropped off.
Just disappeared.
So it, it seemed to, in, in the beginning it was a trail and then it looked like somebody tried to make it a class four. And then it, it just disappeared. Maybe it was a trail, maybe it wasn't. So there's really no guidance from V-Trans either about, what did or didn't happen. Glenn, I, I don't think I shared, but I did go back, um, a little further back in the minutes, trying to match these maps up with, with minutes of the board. Nothing in the board minutes indicating there had been a change, though it's not to say they, they didn't record it. I, I don't know.
I don't think I remember being changed. Just left it at the class four hole.
Well, it was a trail. We would never even, couldn't find a class four designation.
Right, I mean, even before class four was cla- uh, was class four, I had a nineteen forty-one map.
Yeah.
Uh, even, and I, that, that you can get from the online site by looking at. But the whole, whole point we're looking for is, at the time all this was going on, our planning commission at that time was saying, whatever you do, don't discontinue this road. It's important for people, even, even if you were to make, and it, and it, whether, a- at a minimum, it should have been a trail. And it looks like it showed up as a trail, uh, in some of these maps here as well, because that keeps you the, the ability uh, to, uh, maintain your water line, but you also snowmobiling, it's walking, it's hiking, it's your recreation area, uh, here. So one of the things, when, when you're looking at, so how did we get there? Uh, I can tell you, we have some people who feel it's Mungero, class four, all the way. That's all they knew. Some people, it's a trail and class four. Others will tell you that Mungero has moved sometimes. It's in one place and then it's moved to another place, uh, uh, here. And, and, and so it, it's that kinda ambiguity that I'm saying, ah, maybe we, we, we can probably do better. The difference, the difference probably between a class four and whether it's a trail, when you start, do you have one where, where it showed that, that it was a trail? There, because the difference between a class four and a trail is by our class four policy that we just approved, you can't gate a class four. You can gate a trail. So if you go up to where the airport is right now and the red gate is there. It's perfectly, you can't block it, but you can gate it. And, and, uh, a, a trail, if you look at the statutes and how they, what, what you can and can't do. Uh, the, the handout that you have that, that, uh, had some, I, I call them recommendations, but it's just, it's easier to edit and create. I'm, I'm not really dug in anywhere where I, I said, hey, uh, keep Mungero, it's a, it's a class four road. There was some easement discussions in the, if you check the minutes and everything, basically, uh, that's a non-issue. The, uh, Mungero, whether it's a trail or Mungero.
That's right away.
Uh, it, it, there's right away. So there's no easement issue at all there. Whatever we decide, correct the map to reflect Mungero for however we're gonna treat from the pavilion over to Sheldon Road. Just once and for all, especially when this whole process started, when, uh, having a couple of newbies like Joe and myself come in here and then we, and first thing we pull is a folder that says the Mungero discontinuation. So you just assume it was discontinued?
But it's not.
But it, 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 it wasn't, and that's how the whole thing, so I didn't want anyone, I, I'm really, all I'm looking for is the clarity to say, okay, what, what is, what do we have? There also got some discussion around, uh, number four of complete resurfacing Mungero with the milled paving as opportunity comes up and as we can financially, like when we do paving in the future and we mill up some of that stuff. It seemed to work so well for that wet stuff on the upper end. Whether, whether it's a trail or not, just, and just continue doing that. All the way and, and I, and the last one, uh, and the, and again, it was more just to get discussion, is if you're gonna make it a class four though, you gotta, we gotta, we gotta remove the gate that's on the end of it. Now, just curious which, everyone else's thoughts.
Is, is it okay to, to leave it as a trail, but still put the millings down?
If we don't have enough millings then?
My understanding, my understanding it is.
Yeah.
And, and if we ran out of millings, uh, we can use crust slate or something like that. I, I don't know, I don't have a sense of what's necessary for the, the road, or the, the trail.
Is there anything in the easements that call out trails versus roads versus?
There, there's no easement. My understanding, and I'm, I'm looking at Jeff, is that my understanding, there's no easement issue.
No, the, the easements were only an issue, I don't wanna talk very much in here today, but, um, there's really no easement issue, the easement issue came up when they were gonna throw up the road. And, uh, they said, well, we, not sure we wanna take care of that road, but we'd like an easement so that we can get to our water line. And, and as one of the bigger landowners on that road, we said, that's no problem if you wanna do that. And the board ultimately decided not to do it, which is fine. But, so there's no, there is no easement issue.
And not really necessary because there's a right of way?
Right, if you, if it's a road or a trail, you, it's your road or trail, so you can get to your water line, it's right there under.
And the water lines aren't under?
Mostly they're either under or right next to, on your side of the.
When you get to the upper end, I think there's some flagging where the water line goes.
Which is your property.
Which is our property.
Down the upper end of your property.
Yep.
And, uh.
Or a person got stuck with a local reg, legislature.
And the only, uh, yeah, the only, um, issue is what direction do you wanna make the road go at the other end? Like, like Kendall's, do you wanna go straight or do you wanna go by the pavilion? And how, how do you wanna deal with wetland there?
Right, and see here.
They had a hard time jading it down there on that end.
Glenn, go ahead.
No, I, 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 I look and say, absolutely, I'm, I'm thinking just so, they said when we were looking at the, the dog park that went up there and the person came down and right, we stood right in the middle where the Munger Road was. And she says, oh, that's Timothy, this is wetland. No, it's Munger Road, it's just, it just hasn't, we haven't driven over it a, a, and a lot. Uh, I did, but am I sure that that's not without issue? Heck no. The, the, the one thing I'm pretty sure of from the research is it didn't get discontinued. And there's a, there, and, and they, when you start talking about, uh, if you have to repair a water line and how the red gate went up and then they started driving across the field where the dog park is and digging that up and some driving up the, the runway on the airport, I'm saying, well, okay, I'm, I'm just looking back going, our salt shed's gonna go up, up there. Probably our sand, I'd envision someday, we could even have our town barn up there. If that were to happen, that's a whole lot of activity for people driving in to use the dog park. I'd rather use where, where Munger Road, what, where the red gate is, because you can drive in there and you could always, we, we could, we could do something, it would require permitting. It would, it would require probably more wetland permitting. Uh, I, I.
I don't know how to do that.
You could put a, you could.
You understand, maybe not if you, if you use the grass at the pavilion, but it stops the, but those are, I, I don't think it's something that's gonna happen next year or within five years, but I'm saying that at some point someone's gonna be dealing with, if we do have our municipal stuff going on, there's probably too much activity that we'd want people driving in trying to park a mo, uh, on the left side of the pavilion to, to access the dog park, I would probably want to keep them.
I assume they're.
On Munger Road, that's the only reason I.
I assume parking, which is kind of a separate issue for the dog park, from what we're talking about, was in that area between the National Guard and the old hangar, for now, at least. And I don't know what it's gonna look like once there's a salt shed right there.
Oh, there'll be a salt where, where you can't do, right?
So I don't know if you can park there anymore.
I think, I think if you move the milling pile away, they'll be parking for the dog park right where that milling pile is.
Until we put the sand there.
I thought that's where the.
Until we put the sand in and we have things going, and, and we probably will wanna put a fence around if we start putting equipment up there.
And the sand.
It still puts me back to the original, and that's why it brings me back to the original Munger Road that I'm, I, I keep coming back saying, that's the one where I think.
Is there a permitting issue, Joe, with wetlands to, to maintain Munger Road where it is, existing from the red gate?
Uh, I started poking around, um, if, if the road is there, then no, it's, it's an existing road. If we can prove that there's something underneath whatever grass grew.
Sure.
There should be, I mean, I'm sure there's something there, so, yeah, if we can prove that there's gravel, we just didn't drive on there for a couple of years, I think we'd be okay. Or if we just drove on there, the road, it would be fine.
It would still be, it would still be starting to fall. It would still be okay.
If we open that gate, we can.
Any action tonight, Glenn, would be action to reaffirm Munger Road as a class four road? And then there would be further steps in the future, right?
Oh yeah, there, and, and I think another, the new board, a new board would be, will be in here by that time. I'm not looking for the decision.
Just thinking if we make it a trail, then I think you'd have to have a public hearing because you're discontinuing it as a class four.
You stopped it as a class four.
Yeah.
There, there was these whole requirements for hearings and public hearings that I'm not sure, some happened. I know the original one to discontinue there was one in, uh, in the early two thou, uh, two thousands when they went at it, but it, uh, they had it up at the airport, that fell through, because, and then they came back and I thought they were talking trail and class four.
Looks like it failed due to inaction rather than by any discussion.
Oh yeah, I, I don't think it was, it was just lack of.
Motivation, yeah.
Just a few years ago, there was, uh, one of our supervisors, they wanted to discontinue a bunch of roads. And that was one of them, and he got the eye for all.
Yes.
But if we, if we reassert that it's a class four road, then we gotta take down that gate, right?
That's correct, we, we would not.
At least open it.
We would not be, you can't, the, the law is pretty clear, not just our policy, but the state statutes, that you can't gate a class four road. So, uh, that's, that, that's the one where you say, now, under, I wanna make sure with the, there should be a good full discussion. Part of my research showed that back in early two thousands, the whole reason this discussion started is we had joyriders tearing up fields and stuff up there. And, uh, I'm not looking to open everything up and have joyriders tearing up fields, I, I think it's a, I, again.
They're there again.
Where, but, but I'm saying, I'm not looking to solve one problem, make, make two or three more either, but I think right now, are we making sure that that is at least minimum trail, if it's not class four? But then I'm thinking in terms of, uh, it's a lot, it's a bigger discussion saying, if that's a class four road, you're looking down the road thirty years from now. And someone, uh, Jeff here decides to build a couple houses out there. We have the guidelines that says if you're going to, you take and bring the class four up to class three and then, you know, you follow the guy. But those, those are the things that you would do, I look around Fair Haven, there isn't a whole heck of a lot left for us if we're going to have any new home.
Like, it, it's only gonna be millionaires building them now.
So as of today.
Yep.
This is class four to here, and then this is nothing, or a trail?
No, as of today, if you look at the maps, and Joe will pull one up, it shows class four just abruptly stopping and nothing.
This, this is the most recent, ooh, look at that, that is a fancy map.
That shows a lot of it.
I like that.
That's not really what I wanted.
No.
Oh, your tech, technology got so good.
That's, that's the most, that's the most recent.
There you go.
Yeah, I, as I said.
Yeah.
You're assuming that way.
As you already said, the last one they took.
Right there.
It shows class four coming off from Sheldon here and stopping, not even turning where we built, not even the stuff that we put the milling in.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it suit your purpose to just reaffirm the class four and reaffirm the trail through there?
The, the Munger isn't a.
Isn't in question.
Yeah, the town highway sixteen there, this, this one here, that's not really in question, it's this jog here that, um, was there and then wasn't there and then was there and now it's gone again.
And are there any benefits to being a trail versus a, to the, on the wetland side? That's just a question to throw out into the universe, like if it's considered a class four road, can you go and just fix it up versus a trail, can you not?
There's gotta be class four roads through wetlands in this state, all over the place.
Yeah, so, but like if it was, if it was a trail, can you not?
I, I bet I.
Right, so like.
Don't know.
Does this decision impact?
Right, so.
How easy does.
If we changed it to a trail and put the millings down and tried to maintain it, would we be in trouble with the wetlands?
More so than just roads.
You can't, you have less flexibility.
Right, I know, it's a big question, I don't know.
It's the, the, the guidance seems to call out trails, class fours and class threes, it's kind of, they're, they're.
They bump them.
Yeah, they, they kinda, you can do this or you can do that, you can change it to this or that, and it doesn't seem like there's a big distinction between. It seems like you can move between those three without, without trouble.
I think tonight, if there's any action, it would be to reaffirm it as a class four, 'cause I don't think we could change it as a trail without, or at least I wouldn't feel comfortable changing it.
We, we would have to have information meetings and we would have to.
Okay.
So I think the only action tonight from the board would be.
But, but.
Cause it felt like.
Is what discussion and what public hearings do we need for this section right here? Because it's not class four, according to this map.
But, I'm, I'm, and I'd be attesting, that was done without information meetings, it wasn't done properly and, and makes it null and.
That is?
That's clear.
Oh, okay.
That, that's one thing.
Okay, that's what you were saying.
Cause it looks like Glenn, back in, uh, the fall of two thousand eight, the ball was rolling, the ball was rolling, and then all of a sudden it stopped.
It stopped.
And then nothing was really taken for action, but the map changed.
And, and that could be a combination of, when I look back, that's when one of our managers left. That's when we had a board change, there, there was so much change that happened, I just think it felt at a crack. It was not from, anyone with any fore, the forethought of saying, I'm gonna do this or that, I just think it, and then probably the reason the map doesn't show anything at all now is someone might've asked the question, saw a Munger Road discontinuance folder, saw something else and just made an assumption, it was discontinued because there was a hearing and then I, and, and, and.
There was a motion taken, but the details never got worked out.
So I, I think that's how we got there. I like the idea of, I think if you, but I, I've been, and also besides researching what we could find here, just talking to some folks from around that timeframe. And when I asked them, what's Munger Road? Munger Road goes from the pavilion all the way around to Sheldon Road. Uh, and, and as far as whether it was a trail, discontinuing or anything else, that's Munger Road. I'm not convinced that it shouldn't be a trail for the first part, but I think we have. We gotta go through the steps if we're gonna do it.
But if it was a road, that, that's an alternative route to the north side.
Oh, if anything happened on twenty-two A, we could, we could very usually have a.
You wouldn't see me for a week.
You could go around.
Until it got fixed.
Airport road, you need it.
So I would agree, I think it does open a bigger discussion, which I think they started having, but didn't finish.
Right, so.
So I mean, should we have public hearings in the next few meetings?
Well, if we assume that it's a road, then, then public hearings would be to solve what?
Public hearings would have to be in order to make it a trail.
To make it a trail.
Right, so, but if we, if we say we're gonna do it as a road, then all you have to do is take out the gate and it's a road, no public hearings.
Which, the gates are wide open now anyway, it had been a long time.
Okay.
The, the reason I would want to.
No.
If, if someone were to come back and say, I, I don't, we, we, we go back and reaffirm that it's a class four road. And if someone came back and says, you know, I'm not really comfortable, one of our abutters or whatever, it could be anyone, taxpayer in doubt, saying, I think it should be then a, a, a trail and then class four? Then I'm saying, that's where you have the information meetings, that's where you find out, you get, you get everyone, because I don't think, I think it's the stakeholders, but it's also, this is the Fair Haven Airport Recreation Area, it's all of our taxpayers, I think we all have a daughter.
Is there any other property owner that decided to go up there, Jeff?
I'm the only adjoining property owner to the road, but Hughes is however, right of way through me from that road to.
Well, I, I think if Hughes is, I believe if I was, if I was the Kendall's, on the other side of the airport park.
Kendall's do a butt.
On the other side of the airport property, because I think it makes a big, is, is Mr. Durkey has.
So he comes in the other way.
And the, the armory that, that's up there, I, I think there's, but I mean, those are just the butters. I come back and say, again, there's a big chunk of Fair Haven taxpayer land right there. And whether our taxpayers are going to utilize their recreation area or a handful, a few, cause right now, I see that recreation area, I see my, the RC flyers. And it's gonna be the dog park going forward. And there's a few people who, cause it's a nice little walk going up, walking up where the Munger Road is growing the grass and coming around and walking down the runway and walking back, it's a, you don't have to go all the way up to the water plant. But I think it's a, that's another reason why the recommendation I threw out first of having it as a class four road, I think it is better into, if you're gonna have a vision for the future of the airport recreation area.
Green Mountain Power has a chunk in there too.
So if we were to move that direction, Glenn, your motion would probably be to reaffirm it as a class four and, um, direct Joe to have the maps updated to, something like that, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I was thinking.
And then all the details would have to come.
That would be my motion.
Later, there's gonna be a lot of details that would have to come.
That's through the red gate?
Yep, well, that's true, where the original, it's, it's the Munger Road. Other, other people, the only reason we have people driving through the meadow is, is we gated Munger Road. I mean, and, and then, and then it just caused us to start driving in the old runway, it just, it just started building again. And I'm just saying, I just wanna reaffirm that Munger Road is a class four road. And the second part was having Joe.
Make sure that, update it, update it too.
Well, is, is reaffirm the right, because that, that means we're taking an action.
I don't know, because.
I think we should say, we recognize that Munger Road is still a class four road.
We rec, and, right, and.
Either, however.
And, and the map should reflect that, and if any current boards going forward, cause you may have someone come in and say, no, I, we are.
So I think there's no action on reaffirming or change, cause the consensus, I, I believe is that it's a class four road. So the motion might say to, um, direct the town manager to update the map to properly classify it as a.
Class four road.
Class four road.
And that would mean our new class four road policy applies to that class four road, no different than any other class four road we have in here either.
And the only pitfall you have with that is Kendall's will not let that gate disappear, just gonna, I'm gonna voice their concern, cause they're not here.
Yeah, I, I, I was thinking about that too, but it, we're kind of up against a, a road block, you know, with the state, if we can't do it, if we can't block the road.
That's where, I think Jeff, that's where we could have further discussion if it were to come to something like that and we could have public hearings on making it to a trail.
That's where you do the public hearings, you go, but instead of, I'd wanna do it by following the process that you're supposed to follow.
Now, is there anything that's in the, in the state law that says we can't put a toll on that road and, and have a drop gate and make it look like a toll, that everyone's happy?
No, plus you can't gate it.
You can't, and it's not, it's not a locked gate, right, it's just a gate. You can't have a gate, or you can't have a locked gate.
You can't gate, I, I, the verbiage is you can't gate a class four, I think it even, even our policy that we just, we just endorse.
I think so.
That's how they get away with putting the gate on the road, goes up through the woods, up to our land.
Glen Lake, flaw? How do they get away with that?
They get away, cause it's just a trail.
Okay.
Okay, it's a trail. You can gate a trail.
But we wanna go through, to a, to the trail process, now we're talking about action and plenty of.
There's a whole lot of, and I'm saying, I, I wouldn't, and I wouldn't set, I wouldn't set the next select board up in for that unless there was something that was put in there. That's why I like the idea, so the motion would be.
If it is truly a class four road, I think the motion would be to direct Joe to properly update the map to reflect that.
Right, and so my motion would be is, is this board's opinion that Munger Road is a, is a class. Munger Road from the pavilion out to the Sheldon Road is a class four road, and we're directing, uh, the town manager to have the map properly reflect that.
And, and all we're doing is making sure that all the records are correct.
That's correct.
At this point.
Correct.
If the Kendall's do it, and I would anticipate that they do, they will, come in and, and have a, an issue with that, then, you know, the next board can, can take that, you know, whatever action they feel is necessary.
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second to Glenn's motion?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Rod, um, Joe, can you just repeat it so it's?
Uh, Glenn's motion is to recognize Munger as a class four road and to have the town manager update maps accordingly.
Okay, you fine with that? I, I think the clarification is that it continues to be a class four road. We haven't made a, a, we haven't taken action here, other than to upgrade, update the records. But I don't want anyone to think that we just made this.
No.
So I think the motion said.
Make it different.
To continue Munger Road as a class four, um, road and to update maps accordingly. So, can you repeat that one more time, Joe?
And this is Glenn's motion, obviously. Glenn's motion is to continue Munger as a class four road and to update the maps accordingly.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Any public discussion on the motion? Okay, um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, aye, um, any opposed, any abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Uh, motion carries. You wanna continue that?
You want me to continue this?
Sure.
Fearless Leader for a minute more?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want.
You're already done with it?
We just on the parking lot now?
Yep, looks like it.
Anything for parking lot?
I think we can remove a few things, like the, we, we approved the policy cap reserve funds, so that can come off. Munger Road, we're.
I think you're pretty covered.
Take that off.
Capital improvement?
Capital improvement we can take off, and inclusion policy.
Can come off.
Come off.
Night, John.
Good night, John.
Thanks for giving that back to class four, we don't have a lead.
Maybe.
We'll see.
Public times, it is pending.
I think that's good, that got rid of half.
So that, so we're only leaving the next board with about four items on the to-do list to.
All, all the easy ones are left.
Oh. The easy ones, okay.
Build a bridge, I don't know if you can drive a car, just building a bridge.
Jane's gonna take care of all those in the first week.
Yeah.
Um, anybody, anything that they wanna add to that, or, I guess we just wait and let the next board set their priorities?
Who wants to put some stuff up for the next?
I think we should shovel it right in there.
Being that I'm gonna sit here, I'm gonna thank you for not adding anything.
Yeah, I would, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't wanna add it. Um, so let's move on to board roundtable and start with, uh, Rod.
I got nothing.
Uh, Jeff, I don't wanna take a minute, I don't know, it's kind of the last board meeting before town meeting. Um, wanna take a moment and recognize Jeff, and, you know, Jeff's been on the board quite a long time, ten, fifteen. I don't think you hit twenty yet, but.
Fourteen.
Fourteen years, um, done a great job, I just wanna recognize Jeff, um, for really being committed to the town of Fairhaven. Um, same thing with Rod, Rod has been on the board a few times now, um, not fourteen years though.
No, no, no.
Uh, did a stint with town manager with us, you know, helped out the town, uh, as that position for a while, so I wanna thank Rod too for all his time.
Just after this all came about.
Just after that. So I wanted to thank Rod and then Carol, uh, I think this is her second year on the board. So I wanna thank all, everybody for all the work you've done for the town of Fairhaven, um.
I, I just wanna add that it's been, it's been a pleasure working with, with this board this year. And hopefully Jeff, Rod, and, and Carol, they're, they won't mind when I call, call you, even in your semi-retirement as a board.
I'm sorry, I probably still come to the meetings, but I can leave whenever I want.
That is a nice perk.
So thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The town, it's a, it's a, it's one of those jobs that not, not everyone knows what, what, what you do. There's a lot there, thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to, the people have let me serve for this one. Uh, do you have anything else? I'm all set, we're not gonna throw anything new out there tonight. Um, financial reports, have you got those ready?
You know what, I forgot all that.
Or I can do it for them.
I make a motion to sign the general fund warrant for three million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Rod wants to spend a lot of money in this board.
Uh, motion made by Rod.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris, to spend three point four million on a general fund, and most of that just is moving money uh, from the bridge loan for the wastewater treatment plant.
Paper money.
Yeah, it's to reimburse the line creditor, or however you wanna put it.
Three point four million for water payoff, right, wastewater.
Yeah, but it's to pay off the one, the bridge loan.
Yep.
And go to our real financing source.
And construction, three hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, so I got a motion by Rod, seconded by Chris, on, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to pay the payroll warrant for thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion by Rod, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, and then we'll end with a quick executive session.
Do, do we have a checkbook status?
Uh, yeah.
I, after, after we spent three million, now close to four million dollars, I just wondered what the checkbook had, and I, I was just curious.
Give me a second to pull it up, um. Checkbook balance is, which includes the USDA bond deposit. I don't think I've read one this high. Five million three hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And we're flush, we should be spending.
Should be good.
You, yeah, it sounds like you have a lot, but you've done it.
We momentarily have a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, if you wanna motion.
I need a motion, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to go in executive session for personnel with the town manager, uh, under one VSA three thirteen A three.
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, uh, executive session personnel with the town manager.